Now just the ELA learning gains. This is a chart here that shows you all of our schools. Elementary, middle and high, and we color coded. Our high schools are the blue, middle schools are the red, the green are elementary schools. And these are the learning gains. Remember, this is including all students in grades four through 10 who took the FSA ELA test. So, we rank them from highest learning gains to the lowest learning gains. And as you can see, our high school's definitely on one end where we have our elementary middles, you kind of see in the middle there. But giving us an idea of where we need to be focusing a lot of our attention with our learning gains with ELA. So this is all of them. Please note also, and I don't have that on here, I should have put a bar there, saying that the state average for learning gains was 49%. So, I just kind of have an idea there of where that line would have been, that 49% piece. Now, when we look at ELA learning gains of our bottom quartile, again, this is just our grades four through 10, you see some difference here. And remember, this is the bottom 25% of all of our fourth through 10th grade per school. So here you see a little bit, I mean, our high schools still are over to the right, but our elementary schools you see dispersed out a little bit more than just all to the left. Middle school's still there, being in the middle. The state average for our bottom quartile was 40%. So as you can see that, where that line would fall. And that's why we were talking about earlier, that when we're looking at where some areas that really stand out as our district, in our district, that we really do need to focus on, you know, when compared to the state, you know, we all are having to meet these new learning gains requirements. So if the state is having more success, or other districts are having more success in this than us, then we need to really look at what can we do then to improve this? And that's what we have started doing with our initiatives. All right. So that is our what. The why piece in our social studies, our district did have that five point above the state proficiency. We do believe that this is attributed to our teachers in our civics, especially like, especially we, one school that we did focus a lot on last year was Immerness Middle School because we did put out that we had these district assessments that were available to all of our schools if they wanted to use them. IMS said that they wanted to try them out and use them, and they used them throughout the school year last year. Our RNA department, that's, you know, we talked about Mr. Mullin with Beth Beatty, worked together and worked with those teachers. Those teachers got together throughout the district. Because I mean, remember, when you teach something like civics, you are kind of a loner at your school. You don't really have other people necessarily, you know, focusing on those same standards as you, and you don't have those people you can share best practices with and so forth. So they, you know, developed some camaraderie with each other amongst the district. They've met numerous times with Beth Beatty over last year and this year, they're doing it as well. And, you know, talking about planning, pacing, and sharing resources and best practices, as well as they developed together, you know, formative assessments that the, like I said, the teachers helped create, and it helped them monitor progress of their students throughout the year, including reviewing previous standards that were going to be on that civics assessment. And then the teachers actually used that information and those items and that data to lead instructional decisions with those students. So, we really do believe that that practice in itself was so beneficial, all four of our middle schools are now doing it this year, not just Immerness Middle. So we're really hoping that, you know, of course, we're going to see that growth continue with our civics test. With ELA, we know that we didn't have as much success as we did, as we did in civics. So when we looked at ELA, we didn't necessarily discuss excuses, or even though sometimes some people might say that it's kind of sounds like excuses, but these were, you know, barriers or implications, maybe I could say, that did contribute possibly to our scores that we got. First of all, we recognize that this is only our second year of the ELA assessment, and we were still working on understanding those standards. For example, that first, you know, like Ms. Powers already asked, I go, what does integration of knowledge and ideas look like? Well, that's a common question that we had across our district, so we are addressing that now, and that's, like I said, our PB department is going to be talking to you about that. There is a higher level, there's higher level questions and test items that our students are being asked to complete. It's not just multiple choice questions anymore. They are being asked to do higher order questions, they're asked to explain and cite references, which is very different than previous years. Our learning gains, like we said, was a piece also that is different from the previous years. Another difference is the integration of the reading, writing, and language standards and instruction. In elementary school, you know, you have that one teacher that has always taught those subjects. In our middle school, for example, in the past, you would have a separate, you would have your reading teacher and you would have that language arts writing teacher. And you had a different set of standards and they would teach it in separation. Well, now, they have merged. Our ELA standards are combined, they're integrated. So now you're talking about teachers also having to instruct in an integrated way, which is also not so much a challenge, but it is different. It is something that we are having to grow and learn from and get better at. Finally, the writing portion changed in the test. Before, it was only assessed in fourth, eighth, and tenth. Now, every fourth through 10th grader is taking their writing portion as part of their whole ELA assessment. It's combined, like I said, with the reading component for one score. And also, the prompt itself, what they're being asked to do for their writing content is very different. Before, they were given a prompt and they were to write about a personal story, no reading really needed to take place, except for just the reading and the prompt. But now, that is not the case. They are having to read multiple different texts and passages, and then their essay for say, is actually in response to what they read. And so there is a comprehension element to it. So it isn't just about, you know, tell about a time that you went on a trip with your parents, where anybody could have that experience, it could write about it possibly. It's a very different piece now. So, it's definitely more higher order, and there's that reading link with it, that comprehension piece. So all of these were some significant changes that has happened with our ELA tests that we think did contribute to, you know, our scores being what they are, but now, we're addressing these and what we can now do to make it better. So, the now what piece, as I'm going to, David Rowland and Scott Hebert are going to discuss with you. David's going to be talking about the district initiatives and action steps, and then Scott will be talking to you about the individual school initiatives and action steps based on this data.
Good afternoon. As Amy stated, we'll go into sort of take a broad overview of our plan from the district office and some of the general sets that we've taken to get ready for the school year. And getting ready for this school year actually started in October 2015 when we received the 2014-15 data. It's typical of receiving in the summer, and as you remember, for the 14-15 data, we didn't get it until October. So we could not actually do a complete planning session like we had typically done in the past. So, when we got that data in October 2015, we, you know, obviously, we started to analyze it and talk about, you know, what are some of the key factors for those schools that were successful? And what we, what we found is, we had discussion, is those leaders, those experienced principals who were, had expertise in the planning, strategic planning process, were typically those that were a little bit more successful. So, we said, how can we take advantage of that expertise? You know, we've got to, and especially, you know, we see a lot of people retiring, we got a lot of new principals that haven't been through these planning processes. So we said, how can we capture that? And so, the first thing that we did was we said we've got to have a comprehensive data analysis, and we've got to put all these experts in a room together so that we can learn from each other. So we planned a summer collaborative session, planned three days with our administrators. And each school could bring together a team from their school, five people, they included their administrative staff, and then they would bring somebody else from their leadership team to participate in that. And we put them all together, and what we did is we took every piece of data that could be printed to a school in the planning process, and as an ed services team, we came up with graphic organizers to help lead those teams through that data and actually come up with , with action steps to improve in those areas. So, in our first data session, I'm going to sort of jump ahead. In that first day that we got our administrators, the first two days that we got our administrators together, they had their teams of graphic organizers, and this is just some of the data that our schools went through. And for each one of these pieces, they had a graphic organizer to look at. So we, FSA data, FCAD data, AP data, formative assessments, and those computer software programs that each school utilizes, they worked to bring that data, and we guided through that as well. We also looked at the subgroups, and free and reduced, ethnic designation, ESE, ELL, attendance and discipline data. We even broke down where the observation data that schools, the administrators did at their school, and we, we had them actually tabulate some of those areas so they could see when they did a walkthrough or an observation at their school, what were they seeing most often? We took the parent survey data, student survey data, teacher data. So as you can see, this is just a very comprehensive breakdown of our data.
Budget. You'd sit there, I said budget, and I wasn't sure how that fit into it.
Yeah, some of the schools, you have different budgets for different areas, especially at the high school when you get into AP budgets, you know, some of the ID programs. And we had them sort of look at how they've been spending their money with their school budgets, and how that tied into their plans. And a Title I budget for elementary and middle schools also have Title I budgets. So we, you know, had Trish Douglas, Title I coordinator, talk to them about Title I budgets and take them, facilitate a process where they talk about how they were spending those dollars and make sure that it was, you know, targeting the things that they wanted to target. So, we took them through that process, we did two days, and we, and then at that point, as an ed services team, we collected all that data, and we reviewed all their responses and said, you know, what are some commonalities that we find from all these schools? And then our schools actually started to write their school improvement plans. They had some other things that occurred during the summer, and they sent people to training, they went to Avid training, they went to model schools, but they were, at the same time, tying all this data together, bringing in parents, bringing in SAC folks to discuss that data, and then they were writing their school improvement plans. So, as an ed services team, after we got all the graphic organizers, and after we got their, you know, some basic information from their school improvement plans, we talked about as an ed services team, how can we support our schools and what, what they've determined are important to them? And we also looked at what's important to us as a district also. So it was a collaborative process. And during, throughout those days, the great thing was, is we set our schools in feeder patterns. So that, for example, you know, Central Ridge, Central Springs, Central Springs Elementary School, La Canto High School were in close proximity. So, we would actually have shareout sessions throughout the day so they could learn from each other. So those people that have this expertise in planning and have expertise on what to hone in on, they can learn from each other. So it was a great learning experience, very positive. We had always broken down data in the past as a district, but this was just a little bit different way to sort of capture the expertise of those folks that are, you know, have the experiences. So after we did that, we started to put some together, put together some more specific plans. Mr. Hebert's going to talk about some of those specific plans. But one thing that, that we did as an ed services team is, how can we continue to support schools, give them feedback based on what we saw in the summer? So those factors, let's also show you what they, what those are. These are the common factors that our schools identify as important to student success. I don't want to read to you, but I'll just go through a couple of them. Lessons centered around EQ or learning objectives, real world application, complex task, rigor, higher order questioning, authentic engagement, effective inclusionary practices, technology used to enhance and extend learning. So we took all these things that were identified, and we put them into a walkthrough tool as, you know, just for a simplified term. We'll call it strategic planning and feedback walks. So as an ed services, we put together a calendar to visit all of our schools. And we're going to go out to all the schools with groups of anywhere from eight to 10 people, and we put together a walkthrough tool based on these factors. So when we walk through, we're looking for evidence of these things that contribute to success, because that's where our school set contribute to success. So we go through, we go to the school, and we've prepared our principals to let them know what it's going to entail, what the instrument looks like, and we go out, we set us out about two hours to go to a school, you know, with eight to 10 people. We spend about 20 minutes in each classroom, and we all hit about four classrooms. So within an hour and 20 minutes, we hit 40 to 50 classrooms. And we're collecting data, so it gives the school a nice snapshot of what's happening at that time. We collect that data, we then invite the administrator in, and their administrative team, or whoever they would like from their leadership team, and say, basically, these are the, this is what we captured. You know, when we walk through, we saw evidence of these things, and we give them a breakdown of the percentage of time that we saw those things. And for that, for that visit, and for this first time, we're really not trying to tell them what to do, we're just basically giving them feedback, an outside set of eyes, you know, they walk through the buildings on a regular basis, but they can't cover 40 or 50 classrooms in an hour and a half. So we give them that feedback, and then if they, you know, want to, you know, at some point in time, we have a follow-up conversation, or actually on that day, we have a little bit of a conversation, any questions, any support we can give you, any feedback we can give you. But once, once we've gone through all of our schools, we're going to compile that data as an ed services team and look at, look at that data and see, you know, we have district initiatives that we're pushing out, and so we get to see, are we being successful in our initiatives reaching the classroom? So, it's sort of twofold. Our schools will get this data, they can sort of reflect and say, you know, I wonder why they're seeing that, you know, we've been spending some time on that, we wonder why it's not happening in the classroom, or vice versa, you know, we've been working hard on it and it's really showing up. And then as a district services team, if some of the things that we're not seeing or we're seeing, you know, it helps us adjust with our plans as well to address student learning at our schools.
Mr. Rowland, where did that concept come from?
It was sort of a collaborative effort from ed services. You know, we all talk to different schools. Like personally, I've talked to one of our surrounding counties, they had something similar, but not exactly. So, we just sort of collaborated, and it all stemmed from the initial conversations about planning processes, and then supporting those planning processes.
That is very innovative. I mean, that is very important curriculum building systemic change, so I'm just very impressed by it. I knew you guys were working on a piece of this, but that's, I'm excited to see how that's.
And the principals are excited because this team's going to focus on more, just more on the classroom, and the feedback.
Well, because they get to see a third party can kind of help them, and like you said, you can't get into 45 classrooms in two hours and get that kind of feedback that they can say, okay, so are we, what we're working towards, are we seeing that? And I recognize, it's not going to be every, every time you go, you're going to see every single thing, but to see some of the evidence of that helps in every possible way.
And part of this came out, a little bit of it came out of the discussion at the high school accreditation process, because schools find that interesting and don't always agree when, when people come into accredit a high school, but it's always good to have some outside feedback, because you know, if you're there every day, you don't recognize everything like a fresh set of eyes.
And I respect too, because that allows the superintendent and her staff, and Mr. Mullin, to then share with us to say, you know, my team has seen firsthand the evidence of this, and that it's not simply that you're waiting for that information to get, so...
And so far, we've done four, four schools, two, two elementary, a middle, and a high. And, you know, we're revising and fine tuning the processes. We've had a few indicators that we've, we've changed just because we don't think the data's telling us what we want. So, it's an ongoing process, and schools are giving us feedback, and we adjust and adapt as we go. And then the last thing that we've done as a ed service team, as a general approach, is we've sort of changed our format for our administrative meetings. One thing that we recognize is that, you know, we see a lot of changes in the standards of what's being asked of the students. Are all of our administrators, including ourselves, are we staying in tune with what that means in the classroom? So we've embedded staff development in all of our administrative meetings. So, for example, on our principal meeting, we extended it to a full day instead of a half day, but within that full day, we'll take two hours, and we've done a lot of work with the ELA standards. You know, if a principal or assistant principal's going to give feedback to a teacher, they need to have a full understanding of what that is and what they're looking for. So, you know, it's a learning process, but we're excited as an ed services team that we feel like we have a good overall approach, and it's sort of cyclical. You know, we keep revisiting the same themes. All those things that we identified in the summer as important to student learning, they're popping up in all of our meetings, they're popping up in our school visits. So, we're very focused on, in our approach right now. So, that means I'll turn over to Mr. Hebert, and he will talk about more specific initiatives.
Good afternoon, everyone. So as we talked about the work that we've done with focusing on our ELA, we look at what is our curriculum that we have, because as you know, we've got to base everything on, we have the standards, and then we have the curriculum that then supports those standards. So, at our K to five, in our ELA, we have reading streak, and those are all the pieces and parts and components of what we do for our elementary students. At six to eight, which is our middle school students, we have the curriculum that we use, which is collections. Students receive 90 minutes of ELA instruction, and students also receive 45 minutes of instruction if they're below gray level. And that program we use is called Inside, which is by Nat Geo, it's a Sendgate product. And that helps support those students that are struggling in the area of reading beyond the 90 minutes. In high school, nine through 12, we schedule ELA and reading, and we provided support systems for the teachers using our collections, as well as our Edge series. And Edge, again, is our series that we use for our students that struggle in the area of ELA. And we have curriculum maps that Leah Swiget and Keith have helped develop with teachers from those teams in both middle school and high school to kind of help map out what does it look like and how do we work with our students to go through that process? So that's the core curriculum that we use, each of our schools uses as a base. And as you know, there's other supplemental pieces that we also put into place that can be purchased with other funding sources, such as Title I, Title II, and school-based funds that they may have. This year, we provided training in the area of reading and writing together, and this is through a company called Core Connections. Our elementary schools have used this company for several years now in helping students with the area of digging deep into the reading, as well as understanding how to incorporate that into the writing. And the, you'll see this in many of our schools as you go through, the idea, the main idea is the topic and the point, and then you have that evidence, the examples and details to support or prove that particular point. Our elementary schools were using Core Connections, our secondary schools came on board, and so they are also being trained with Core Connections as well. They're just beginning this year, so they're just starting that initial training. Elementary schools have been trained for the past couple of years, and actually, this year, the trainer is going to each elementary school and providing individual training at the school with second through fifth grade teachers. So she goes in, she meets with the teachers, she then provides a lesson, the teachers watch her teach the lesson, so it's like a lesson study concept. They come back out of the classroom, she then talks through with them about what she did during the lesson, answers any questions she has, and then the afternoon, she does a second lesson with another group of teachers. So, she's been, she's at Rock Pressure today, she was at Home Assess yesterday, went and met with her, and felt that the whole initiative that we're trying to do is, you know, get into the schools instead of just doing a district training, but providing that training within the schools has been very beneficial. These are just some examples of some of the writing that you would see, and again, it's kind of helping students to frame and to, you know, kind of as they build the writing, how do they do that? And a big piece that she's been talking to the students about is really helping them to understand kind of what is the prompt, and then kind of that reading piece, and being able to read the multiple levels of text. I know Katie and Keith are going to go through that with you a little bit, but really, it's getting that piece together for the students to understand as they look at that text set that they have to look at. This is some staff training that was done this year, that we've been conducting this year and the past couple of years with our ELA teams. FastBridge, you may have heard some information about FastBridge. Last year, we began using FastBridge as a way to progress monitoring students in ELA. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we used to have FAIR, which is the Board Assessment of Instruction and Reading. That whole system kind of went, I don't think it was supported as well, and just kind of wasn't working for us. So we looked, we did some research, looked at multiple companies, and came up with this particular product that has helped meet our needs at the elementary level. Secondary decided to take a look at it, and so now this is a K-12 initiative as far as progress monitoring the area of ELA. Now, the product does offer math and behavior as well, although we really focus on the ELA piece. These are the assessments, it's online, it's research-based, there's scoring, reporting, and training, it's all available for teachers 24/7 with FastBridge. One of the pieces that we've adopted at the elementary level this year is called a curriculum-based measurement, and it's a way to kind of dive a little bit deeper in understanding how to support students in the area of reading. And so we are doing that in first and second grade. All of those teachers, every teacher was trained by Katie Manning and Sarah Hebert in how to use curriculum-based measurements. They're going to do a follow-up training in January, February, again, to say, okay, now that you've used it, how can we help support what you're doing? So all of this is kind of building as far as how can we help support in the area of ELA, using our data to really help us drive what we do. Secondary is just beginning this year, so they're kind of in that, you know, understanding of administering the assessment and then beginning to kind of review the reports and understand how to use FastBridge. So again, nice piece because it's a K-12 initiative, just like Core Connections. A reading, that's what we use for FastBridge, and that's the universal screener. It's computerized, takes about 15 to 30 minutes, it gives a broad reading achievement. One thing that we emphasize to teachers, you know, you, you know how well your students are doing sitting and listening to the read. This just gives you an example, an opportunity to say, okay, here's what I think, but the teacher still has to use his or her own good judgment when making decisions about students. But this is just a way to kind of do a quick screen, see how our students are doing. Supplemental programs that we also have available in our schools, and you can see those are, are three of them that we have that are supportive. One is SuccessMaker, that's at all our elementary schools, and three of our four middle schools. Study Island is a program that is at all our elementary and middle schools, and I believe we have a few of our high schools. Mr. Rowland, can you...
Yes.
All, all three high schools?
Yes.
Are using Study Island as well? And again, both of those programs are based on standards, but again, they support our core curriculum that we are currently using. So all of these are not, they don't replace what we have, nothing replaces our core curriculum, but they supplement, so they fill in the holes in pieces and parts. The last piece is really a focus, and as you saw from the data, helping support our secondary reading classes is something called Achieve 3000. This is a way to differentiate reading material for students in the classroom. For example, if we were going to read an article about John F. Kennedy, and we had students reading at different Lexile levels, I could take the same piece of text, and I could provide it to the different Lexile levels, the exact same piece of text, and it spits it out and takes out words, it's a great, yes, it's a great way. So you're not having to say, well, let me go find three different JFK articles and make sure they're saying the same thing. It's the same article, it's just given out at a different level, depending on the, you know, obviously, the higher level is going to be the one that you want to move towards, but if you have students that need that, we can all read the same text in the classroom with that.
And it's so positive for students, you know, with, I'm not getting frustrated or upset that it's so positive.
Yep. And so this is, this is something that we've explored this year, so we're, we're working...
Full grade levels?
Right now, it's, we're just, we just purchased it for secondary, because we felt that was a definite need.
Definitely.
Of starting there. But it does go all the way down to third grade if we wanted to look at that. But for right now, we thought the need was secondary.
Sure.
And so the teacher's been trained and getting the opportunity to begin using it. They can practice reading with complex text, and it also, there's a piece on the progress in reading and writing piece as well. Social studies, as we've talked about, is an area, you know, that we worked on, and Beth Beatty, who is our social studies TOSA, has done a phenomenal job of coordinating and putting her resources on the website. If you go to the district website, that's just a snapshot of what she has, but really integrating the English Language Arts and Social Studies text together. Katie Manning, as well, with our elementary, worked very collaboratively with Beth to create resources for teachers in the area of ELA and social studies. So teachers are, have things, you know, a lot of times they say, I don't know what to use, we wanted to provide it for them. So they provided a lot of paired texts and paired passages that teachers can go in and access, and they can get this 24/7, they don't need a username and password, they can click and find it. The other two programs we have is, you know, our fourth and fifth graders have iPads, so we have a program called News O-Matic, which is a way to find news of the day and access it and review it. It's online, and it's interactive, students can use that. So we have purchased that for all of our fourth and fifth grade students. And then, at the secondary level, something called News ELA, which again, is a program teachers and students can access to find the social studies resources at their level. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Lyndy for what does it look like?
Okay, good afternoon. So you've seen the what, we've gone through a lot of data analysis, and really, we did some strategic planning, looked at the district levels, how do we support instruction in school, and one of the biggest things we found are things you've lifted up. One, standards-based instruction is really how we're going to accomplish the tasks and help our students be proficient. and help our students be proficient in all the different assessments and in their learning, just to help them grow. But the biggest question has been coming out, what does that look like? Okay, we understand standard-based instruction. We've seen all the different resources that our teachers have to support them with that, including our core curriculum materials and then the supplemental resources that we give them. We've done a lot of curriculum mapping with those ideas of sharing those resources, providing training to help support the instruction that our teachers need to help with providing that instruction. But now, we've realized through our discussion, we need to know what some of those things look like. Specifically, we focused on integration of knowledge and ideas. Okay, we said, okay, we see what the standards are saying. There are a lot of complex things that are in them. And we know the key ideas and details, that first cluster, craft and structure, were similar to the teaching practices from the past. But when we dove deeper, when we took that dive deeper into those standards in the integration of knowledge and ideas, we realized, ah, this is a little bit higher. The rigor of what we're asking the students to do takes some of those skills, but makes it go a little bit more in depth. So today, we're going to give you a sample of what it looks like. We've been modeling the same professional learning for administrators so they can recognize instruction in classrooms. We're doing it for our TOSAs and curriculum supports, and we're modeling lessons out in the classrooms. And we're doing it through a partnership with the professional development team and the curriculum content people. We have them working together. Social Studies and ELA has been learning very well using those primary and secondary sources to help support what that integration of knowledge looks like. And we're going to continue to build our knowledge to be able to help us recognize that instruction, but also helping these teachers know what it is and the administration of the school so we can support learning. So I have you today, Keith Crisp. He is our high school literacy coach. And he and Katie Manning are going to kind of take you into a little deeper dive of what does integration of knowledge and idea, integration of knowledge look like?
Good afternoon. Thank you. Thank you for a great setup. Keith and I are going to give you a picture of what ELA instruction looks like at both the elementary level and the secondary level today, and also help deepen your understanding and answer some of your questions about what does that integration, knowledge cluster look like specifically at the elementary and the secondary level. I'm going to quickly switch over to our presentation here. And please know that we've worked very closely with Leah Swiget, our secondary program specialist, to develop this, as well as Beth Beatty, our Social Studies TOSA, to develop this information. And between the four of us, we've been out to schools, worked with teachers beginning even as early this summer, looking at the standards, looking at what do they have at their specific grade level? And what resources within their curriculum, supplemental resources can they utilize to help make meaning for students with these ELA standards? So what I want to do is give you a broad overview of how the standards are structured. You know, Amy went into great detail about our data for each category within the ELA standards. So I want to help you understand what that looks like for students and what students are being asked to do in each of those areas. So when we look at Cluster One and we look at key ideas and details, there are three anchor standards that you see there within the presentation. Now, these anchor standards are what the broad goals are for all students K-12 to master in order to be college and career ready. Okay? Now, within each grade level standards, there's more specificity as to what a kindergartner has to do for key ideas and details compared to an eighth grader or a 12th grader. But regardless of grade level, when we are looking at key ideas and details, when we're looking at that data and looking to see what is it that students need to do to be successful with this reading standard one, two, and three, they all tie to this anchor standard here. Okay? Then to give you an idea broadly, when we're looking at key ideas and details, we're talking about can students identify evidence within the text to ask and answer questions? Can they determine the main idea that the author is writing about? And can they summarize those key details to determine what the main idea is? And then we're also looking at just the development and the interaction of those details through the text. And so those are very broadly put skills that are tied to those standards. Now, just to lift out how each grade level specifies further the skills in that cluster. For example, in kindergarten, for Standard One, they would be asked to answer questions related to details in the story, but with prompting and support from their teacher. When you jump up to third grade, third grade, they're still asking and answering questions about the text, but that's the first grade level where we're seeing specific reference into the standard that they have to cite their evidence. So that means as a third grader, they have to say, according to Source One or according to this author in Source Two, this information supports the main idea or the point. And then as we move through to secondary grade levels, for example, eighth grade, not only do integrators have to cite the evidence that's supporting that main idea, they have to know which evidence best supports a particular idea.
So that's what you're talking about, the interaction of the text. You have to have what's the idea and whatever else in there supports that idea?
Exactly. Like we're prove, prove this answer based off what is in the text. And so broadly speaking, when we look at key ideas and details, it really does tie to text, I think it's main idea. But each grade level has very specific guidelines of what that level of rigor looks like. You know, and when we think about the conversation earlier, I think, Mr. Kennedy, you mentioned it. When we look about learning gates from one grade level to another, this is very much where that conversation comes into play because it's not the same standard at third grade and fourth grade. Each year, as we move up through those testing grade levels, that rigor is increased in the standard.
And Amy, when you've talked with teachers about this, are you sort of saying that you have the end in mind, the golf grade in mind, and then you're sharing with them, this is where you're going, this is where you need to be, and these are the steps to get there so they have a really comprehensive idea of what's happening?
Yes, that's been a lot of our work this year, this past year this year, with schools and teams of teachers in understanding, what does your grade level standard say? But also, what about next year? Because it's very much a progression, you know, beginning in kindergarten. They're starting and they're looking at details in text and looking at that evidence. And it's built in each year. So we're having those conversations with grade level teams so that they understand how those skills build and increase in rigor each year so they understand. But really, it comes down to, with key ideas and details, what the author is saying. So think about just their message, what is the point they're trying to get across? Then when we move into Cluster Two, and this would be the standards that were reported in the Craft and Structure data. Cluster Two is really touching on how the author is saying it. You know, why do they make specific word choice? Why do they use figurative language to get that point across? You know, what structure? Is it a poem? Is it an informational text? How is their thinking organized? And why did they make certain decisions about the point of view? And when you're looking at a literature piece, how would that story have been different if it was told from a different character? So really getting into the author's mind when we work on these standards, we want students to know, why did the author make those decisions? They were very deliberate, they were very purposeful to help convey their meaning. And so it's really digging in and trying to think like the author to understand specific word choice, specific text structure, specific point of view. So Cluster One is kind of what they're saying. Cluster Two is how they're saying it. Cluster Three, which is the Integration of Knowledge and Ideas cluster that we're really striving to support, is how does that information connect to other sources? How does it connect to other themes, topics, patterns across other sources so that students can make synthesis and evaluate across those different texts? So one reason why this cluster is so challenging is because in order to accomplish the work that's in Standards Seven, Eight, and Nine here, our reading standards for Seven, Eight, and Nine, students have to be doing Cluster One and Cluster Two successfully. If they're going to, for example, Standard Nine asks students across all grade levels, and remember, these are the anchor standards for K-12. So across all grade levels, Standard Nine in reading is asking students to look at two or more texts and analyze similarities, differences, find patterns, find themes between the two so that they can read, write, speak knowledgeably about that topic. And so, but in order to do that, they have to be able to attend to one source and understand how to pull out key ideas and details from one source if they're going to then build and look at two, three, four sources and analyze the patterns between those. Standard Seven really touches on pulling in diverse media and knowing that a source is not going to just be a text source. It could be something visual. It could be a photograph, it could be illustrations, it could be a map, a chart, a timeline that they have to gain meaning from with our grade levels that are utilizing computer-based testing. It could be an audio clip. Okay, so it could be, here's an excerpt from the passage here you're going to read in print. Then there could be an audio clip that's lifting out a specific section of the text and then asking the student to determine, well, how did the meaning change because you heard that excerpt read from the author? You know, what tone would it clutch in it? Really looking at how that diverse media helps add to the understanding of those sources.
It's very much a Manfield approach. Where you have all the different disciplines coming in together.
Exactly. And so that's why we're really kind of combining our efforts as a PD team and working with Social Studies and Science and trying to show, no matter what discipline you're in, the language arts can be embedded within Social Studies, science content, and vice versa. The science and the Social Studies content is a way to teach the language arts skills. You know, when you look at these, these are skill-based. You need some kind of content to teach those. So that's where we're trying to help build support for teachers on how to pull in Social Studies, science content, you know, especially at the elementary level where generally one teacher's teaching all of those subjects. But then also at the secondary level, you know, working with, you know, across disciplines to kind of support, which is going to help make students see, you know, the patterns between their work and understand that they can read and write, you know, across all disciplines. So to give you an idea of just within this Integration of Knowledge and Ideas cluster, just the increased rigor through the grade levels, you know, beginning and second grade, second graders are asked to explain how visual images, graphic sources help contribute and clarify meaning of a text. So if they're reading in their science series about solids, liquids, and gases, how does seeing a diagram of those different examples help promote their comprehension? Then as you move up into fourth grade, fourth graders are asked to take information from charts, graphs, diagrams, and utilize that information gained from those visual elements along with text that they're reading to support explanation, to support an opinion on a given task or a given prompt. And then as you move up into secondary levels, you know, at the 10th grade level, for example, within this cluster, 10th graders are asked to not only synthesize information presented in diverse media, but they have to be able to determine which details maybe are emphasized more in a video presentation or an audio presentation of that clip. So really touching on kind of the overall meaning of the text and how you gain additional meaning based off those multimedia presentations.
It's going to make more discriminating decisions. And they watch something, they're going to be able to analyze if the lines and where it was, I like this very much.
And I can say, our district formative assessments that are utilized to track progress with this, you know, Mr. Mullin and the team that works to create that has been very cutting-edge with incorporating those opportunities for students to have practice with reading text on a topic and then also seeing a video clip on a topic, and then also listening to maybe an audio excerpt of that passage as well. So that's been a huge advantage in trying to build that support. Students need to be able to attend to with that standard. And then hopefully with what Keith and I will share with you as well, you'll have a clearer picture of what that looks like structurally in the classroom today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ms. Manning is going to pass out a little mini instructional packet that I put together. I'm just going to kind of walk you guys through it so you can actually see what these complex standards look like in the classroom. One of the things that I wanted to point out just out of the gun in terms of comparing the FCAT to the FSA is the difference in rigor and depth of the questions. So this question was taken from the last sample test of the FCAT. That was available, 2014. And then following it on your handout is the exact same type of question but in the format of the FSA. Now, on your handout, if you guys look on that first page, I don't have it on the PowerPoint here, but it says, it has the... Does this online work? Does anybody ever use this? It worked? It worked?
You have to change the...
Oh, do I?
No. I can do it.
Make sure? Okay, while I go ahead and... While that's going. So if you guys look on that packet, you'll see that with an FCAT question, they're basically asking the kids to identify a multiple choice answer. So in this example, and again, they would actually give the kids the definition of each of those terms. So you don't even have to have any background knowledge to be able to answer this question. You can see what imagery is just by looking at it. Now, if we flip over to what this question would look like on the FSA, you'll notice there's a few things that are different. Instead of identifying the literary technique, the question is, how does the author's use of personification affect the message of the sirens? The sirens being a character or a group of characters from the Odyssey. All of my answers are being learned. So anyhow, without going through the content, we can, we can see a couple of things. First of all, the student has to answer in writing. They have to generate original thought. What's more difficult? Answering the best selection that's already given to you or generating original thought in writing? That level of rigor is way more intense. Secondly, the students are analyzing how that use of personification fits with the content. And otherwise, they're analyzing how the form of the, of the, of the literature itself matches the content. That's deep analytical thinking. So that is a huge shift that we just hadn't had before. Another example on that same page, this would be an example using rhetoric. What is an example of parallelism? Now, I would like to also add that there was no rhetoric standard at all for English 910 under the NG Sunshine Day standards. There is in, in our FSA standards. But it would be something similar. Identify which of these is the right answer. And I underlined what you guys can see. But if you look at the way it would be asked on an FSA question, the question would sound like this. How does the author's use of parallelism advance his purpose for writing? Type your answer here. That is a way more rigorous question. So I think Katie's also going to show you some differences in the writing prompts, but the level of rigor has gone through the roof because the standards have changed. And as Katie pointed out, and we were having this conversation earlier about reading tests, the English Language Arts standards measure skills. They are reading skills. Whereas in math, you're measuring, you're learning content. The student must be able to determine zero from, I forgot what the word is, but it starts with poly. But anyhow, yes, thank you, yes. So anyhow, I just wanted to show that, that difference.
Did any of the board members feel like, in a good way, this has become, it's old school again?
Oh, absolutely. I'm setting your thing, yeah.
It's a modern version of old school. I mean, because I remember, we have to read something...
You've done this before.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, you get, your test might be, you're going to sit down and you have to read a paragraph of a prompt, basically. But not the, but a prompt having something that you read, whether it was in, you know, Social Studies or English. And so I, I like, because I think one of the things that we had struggled with during the early FCAT, we know why we were doing assessments, but because the assessments became more weighted in our curriculum than we wanted, so much was going in that direction. And I think this is trying to correct that and say, these are the things students need to be successful in career and as well as in college.
Absolutely.
I just, I'm grateful that you guys are doing this and wow. It's really, it's a lot, we're going to be, I mean, I know it's not going to happen overnight, but it's really the right thing.
Well, the point earlier about, you know, teaching to the test and then, you know, and then we're going to move on with the rest of our lives. You know, with FCAT, I felt that was true. Teachers would have to unteach the writing practices that students had to learn because it was based on a draft and the grammar didn't count. I don't even think we had the standards that addressed grammar under our former standards. And now, this is just a synthesis of skills. This is just a student's ability to cite evidence and elaborate on that. This is just a student's ability to cite evidence and elaborate on that in a short answer. And it's related to text. So these things will not just pertain to the test they take in the 10th grade. They would, they would transfer over to the ACT or the SAT or college entrance exam.
And no one minds being tested on something that's relevant.
Right, right.
It's a ridiculous one.
Oh, absolutely. Before we jump into this next picture, I just wanted you guys, if you could, to flip to the last page of the packet. The Florida, the Florida standards are actually, there's way less of them. There's nine. There's nine reading standards, okay? With FCAT, it was like, there was a million of them. There's only nine standards because they carry the implication that students already know how to do things. I went ahead and circled in the first cluster, the fourth one down, determine central idea. That's the crux of that cluster. And as Katie was saying, that whole cluster, we look at as the what cluster. That's the what cluster. What is the text saying? That's one way to read text. Then if we go down to cluster two, craft and structure, I circled that second standard, you'll notice that it's specific to the words, the language. That's the how cluster. How is the author saying it? So that's a little bit more, and that's a separate way to read a text. If I can, if I can explain that when the author uses parallelism here by saying a faith, of hope, of belief, and that the purpose of his essay is to promote the democratic process, then I can say that by repeating those positive words, he's driving home that purpose. So that's another deep way to read the text. But in order to get to cluster three, which causes me to then compare those things across text, I first have to be able to see them in each text alone. So cluster one and two, those can only be used in one text at a time. And those two clusters mirror a lot of our FCAT, what we call the reporting categories. Cluster three was basically brand new. And we noticed that right away last year. We said, this is going to be our focus because teachers are not used to putting two or three texts on a table and teaching them together. But in terms of how does this look, I'm going to go through this process. And before we go through this little mini lesson, you'll notice that the questions I have for each piece, I have a photo, I have an excerpt from To Kill a Mockingbird, and I have a nonfiction article on two civil rights marches. And you'll notice that in each one, the order of the questions goes from a what question first to a how question and then to a comparison question at the end. And it should be noted that on the FSA, when they take the reading portion of that test, the order of those questions is exactly that every single time because these standards work together. I can't compare the central idea of three texts unless I figure that out within each text first. So there's a vertical sort of, I'm having trouble thinking of the word, there's a connection between them that didn't exist before. So we're going to go ahead and jump into, I was just going to kind of go over this. Lynn, you thought it would be a good idea if I ask a couple of these questions, so. Alrighty, so this is what an integration of knowledge and ideas would look, lesson would look like in the classroom. You guys can follow along in your packets. I also have this on the PowerPoint here. So I'm just going to go ahead and ask some questions if you guys feel like participating here. Most people like to look at a picture. It's a great way to start a unit and generate conversation. What do you notice first?
The strangest thing, and this is totally weird, but the man, the largest man in the picture, I just glanced at him, I didn't see anyone else to the right or to the left, and I just finished reading something about some revolts that took place in Ireland, you know, several years ago. I see this arm and, for some reason, I'm thinking of priests. Of course, it has nothing to do with what's there, but it got my mind thinking about across the world about protests and stuff.
I haven't yet checked out his phone.
Yeah, yes. So therefore, you know, it expanded immediately without me.
Absolutely. Pictures do say a lot. Okay, so let's go from there. So we noticed that there's a pastor in the photo. What people or objects do you see?
Signs.
Signs.
And people you see, black, white, probably other.
We've got black, we've got white, right? What words, if any, do you see?
Teacher.
Teacher?
Dallas.
Dallas.
And again, that picture's your mind, you think Dallas, what do you think of Dallas immediately? John F. Kennedy. Right. So you might have hit the same.
Exactly. Well, we're making connections. Absolutely. Okay, so we'll take it a step further at the setting, time and place. And there's no, well, there is an answer, but we're just, what we're doing is generating discussion. And if I were doing this in the classroom, that purpose would be, before I get to that difficult text that a student's going to struggle through, I want them to want to read it. So this is generating that purpose.
Buildings are old.
The buildings are old.
The clothes are those.
The bandits.
Right, oh, yes. There's a man wearing a hat.
Of, you know, that would probably be the 60s or, you know, or before because that's just, that's what gentlemen tended to wear.
Absolutely. Why do you guys think this image was made? Okay, somebody had a camera?
To record the event, it was an important event.
Okay, to record the event, it was an important event. What point, if any, do you think the photographer was trying to make?
To me, it's sort of like we all, whoever we are, we're working together for whatever its purpose is. And we're doing this peacefully, simply not moving.
That's a great observation.
That was a great point.
A great observation. That's a great point to go ahead and move into the next feast. So here, these are just the questions we asked. Now, if we flip, we have basically the excerpt from To Kill a Mockingbird. This is the scene in which Atticus, the lawyer, is standing or sitting in front of the jail house because his client, Tom Robinson, was moved to the county prison. And there is a mob of men, white men, who believed Tom to be guilty of a heinous crime to a white female. And Atticus knew that there was going to be some trouble, so he's sitting on the courthouse steps. Unknowingly to him, his two children followed him and witnessed this event. Now, during the event, Scout, who is the narrator of the book, little girl, jumps up and triumphantly leaps into the circle when she thinks that her father's about to prove somebody wrong. She doesn't realize that these men are there to inflict harm on his client, and he's terrified. And if we can, go ahead and flip to the questions in the packet right after this scene. These are examples of questions that are based on the standards. You'll notice that I have cluster one questions first, I have what questions, followed by cluster two questions. So, and again, our end goal is integration of knowledge and ideas. Our end goal is to be able to take the photo we just analyzed, this scene, and something else and compare them. So this is part of that process. First question, in this scene, what does Harper Lee suggest about the moral nature of human beings? Now, in this scene, Walter Cunningham is a client of Atticus's. Atticus helps him by giving him a deal on some legal matters that he needs. And what happens ultimately is, he's embarrassed and ashamed of what he's about to do in the presence and innocence of Scout. She just starts up a conversation, hey, Mr. Cunningham, blah, 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 it's nice to see you, entailmen are bad, you know? And he realizes in his shame what happens. Right. Now, one of the themes of To Kill a Mockingbird is the, is the nature of good and evil, that good and evil can exist in all people. And so in answering that question, you know, one could say, well, Lee is suggesting that good and evil can exist in a person. For example, in the scene, Walter shows up to inflict harm and then says, and now I quote my evidence, and then I elaborate on it. This would be like, and I just make another point. So that's a what question. A how question could be something like, right here. I thought he would have a fine surprise, but his face killed my joy. That's when Scout jumps into the mob. So face killed my joy. That's personification. What effect does Lee's use of personification have on the reader? So now we're looking at, why did Lee use personification here? Why did she say, my father's face killed my joy? And the obvious answer would probably be, sometimes it's almost too obvious, is that really drives home the point that he was unhappy to see her there, right? He was afraid. And that would then lead us into probably our next thing. Let's go ahead and jump into the third thing here, right here. We have something provided from history.com. It's called the March on Washington. And it talks about two civil rights marches, one that was planned for 1941 and didn't happen, and the one that happened in 1963. And if you guys would please flip to the questions that are right after that, I think the questions will give you an idea of what, what the students need to do. I think it's one thing to see the text, but if you really want to know what the students are having to actually do, I think looking at the questions, which are based on the standards, would show that. So typical question, what question could be, let's look at that second question. What connections can be made between the March in 1941 and 1963? It's a right there question, but I'm starting to analyze the text. Back to what Ms. Powers was saying, one might say, it was a collection of all sorts of people. It was multicultural. There was young and old. Then if I move down into cluster two questions, let's look at R 2.4, the second one. How does the author's use of the word soaring contribute to the tone of the second to last paragraph? He refers to Martin Luther King's speech as sort of a soaring climax to a joyous day. Well, it makes it a more positive outcome. Maybe this could be used to answer a question which we say that, well, the author is basically trying to say that positive things happen when people get together and work together for social change.
And it brought to mind, either the legend of these stories.
Absolutely.
Or being reborn, so it's something that's going to be continuous.
Absolutely. It's going to be continuous, it's reborn. And with these questions, the interesting thing is that they're just made for deep thinking. There's no right or wrong answer. Now, if we take that all the way, we've gone through three texts, a photo, an excerpt from a fiction story, and a nonfiction article. If we get to our last cluster, this is integration of knowledge and ideas, this is the cluster. But again, how could we get to these questions if we hadn't gone through each thing first? Okay? This is a typical question from each standard. Three, like I said, just to make it clear, there's only three standards in each cluster. There's only three clusters. It sounds like there's limitless things we have to remember. If you look at 3.7, that standard calls for kids to compare a text to a piece of media. That's all it is, okay? So media is a photo. So my question here is, how do the song, the photo, and the excerpt from To Kill a Mockingbird differ in their depiction of the civil rights movement? As Ms. Powers noted earlier, it was a peaceful protest in that photo. In Atticus's scene, it was about to be violent. So a kid can make that comparison because they were facilitated to be able to do that by this question. And again, all I did was take the standard and just flip it into a question. Then we go to 3.8. This calls for students to be able to evaluate the strength of an argument. So when we're talking about being sort of discriminating, critical, this standard calls for kids, it teaches kids to be able to say, that's a weak argument because they're using false reasoning. Long story short, first part delineate, they have to explain the argument. So my question would be, you know, in the March on Washington, this is the last paragraph. The author claims that both marches represented an affirmation of hope, of belief in the democratic process, and a faith in the capacity of blacks and whites to work together for racial equality. How does the author support this claim? Well, I go back through and I find every example that supports that. But what if I don't find any examples? Well, then my answer is, the author makes a weak claim here. There's no evidence within the article to support that. So where these kids are learning how, really, how to be critical readers. Then we get to 3.9. 3.9 is text to text, compare text to text. And our question could be, how does each text in this unit address the topic of support for civil rights for African Americans? So I've set all this up, and we can go back to what Ms. Powers was saying about unity. And if we flip to one last page, this is sort of a culminating writing task. It's basically the same question, but this was from a social studies standard. That was the first thing I looked at when I made this unit. And it was analyze support for civil rights for African Americans, there were other groups listed in American history. I took that, I created a question out of it, tied my units together, and used that continuously to guide my questioning because what I've done in this whole process is prepare kids to write knowledgeably about a topic. My question here is, write an essay in which you analyze support for civil rights for African Americans in American history. Now, back to original thought, I didn't spoon-feed the kids the information the way the FCAT would. They have to create original thought based on these three things. And what they would find is that, well, in all three depictions, there's courageous people. It's all walks of life. Now, in terms of how can I take something that's insanely complex like this and make it simple? You'll notice on the last page, there's a three-column graphic organizer. What a teacher would do, and we're getting all of this stuff from Core Connections, which Mr. Bieber was talking about, is take that prompt, put it at the top of the page, and as they look at each piece, they record any evidence. Then when they see similarities, they circle them, draw connections. They have the content of their essay, and then they can fill in their thesis statement, which would be, support for African Americans in American history included courageous people from all walks of life. And so through this text set, we were able to get to that final cluster three. But part of, part of what I was asked to do in going through this is show the level of complexity and how different that is from what kids have been seeing. And teachers are slowly catching on. There's a sense of urgency that's developing, and we're really trying to spearhead that to get teachers, you know, in the right direction with these standards, which we're very excited about.
What grade level would this have been for?
Nine or 10.
Nine or 10?
Yes.
And what's interesting, board members, and I think it's not a big surprise to us, but I didn't, to accomplish this, which you hit the standards, you have no single major tool of instruction. You have a multitude of resources which would have needed a tool to have accessed all of that and put that together.
I don't know much. I know what you mean.
Sounds like.
But he's right.
Absolutely. You're absolutely right. Everything is internet-based, and we, we've actually been making resource banks via Google Drive with text.
And that's been huge.
Because, you know, Thomas, in doing the exercise, what you've just done here, the child going to the internet and evaluating those statements because some of them are just totally false, but having somebody present and going with this link to be evaluated which are truly false, and that is needed.
Yes, it, we really are excited about these standards. And the test itself is, it's a reflection of the standards, you know, and that makes sense, but students are going to learn how to think critically. There's no way around it if we're, if we're teaching these standards. I'm going to turn.
Excellent.
I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Manning.
Thank you. Yes, and what Keith shared.
Can I have just one second, please? Just for a point or two. Are we, it's 2:00. I don't know how much longer the presentation's going to be, but I know we have another one. Do you think it might be good for us to break for lunch and come back in an hour now? Or what should we do? It's getting a little bit late. What would be? I don't know how much longer we have.
Five minutes.
But there's more after your, is there any more in the state of the district after you're done?
No, they're, they're.
Oh, they're the end, okay. I saw some other people in the audience, I thought there were more presentations. Okay, okay, very good.
So you're okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, Keith shared, kind of walked through an activity. Now, this would be developed over the course of days, weeks, you know? And I think when, when you shared, Mr. Kennedy, this reminds you of kind of old school. It made me think of what you would teach in themes and units. It's very much, that's a good connection because it requires stamina on the student's heart to tend to multiple sources, multiple presentations of a topic and kind of synthesize that all together. And I think, you know, it is certainly more realistic for what they need to be ready for, for success in high school and college and even the workforce. I mean, just preparing today and actually preparing for this professional development in summer, thinking, how are we going to help, you know, deliver this to schools? I mean, we looked at video clips of what it looks like in the classroom. We looked at research, you know, from the state. We looked at test specs. So we looked at multiple sources to pull this together. And so that really is a real-world application of what we're asking students to do with cluster three. And so I think it's the right focus and it's the right approach. It's just very different, and then especially different by grade level depending on that rigor of standards. So giving you a perspective, perspective of the elementary world, I want to lift out just again, just differences from where we were with FCAT. You know, we're moving in our third year of FSA standards, so still working on understanding. But the difference mainly would be with FCAT, students were writing to a specific prompt based off personal experience. No reading required, you know, no sources to cite based off their schema, their imagination when they're writing. And then when they are taking that reading component of FCAT, we're looking at all multiple choice questions. So kind of as Keith lifted out with his examples, that's a lot easier task for students to select from something that is given and read out, you know, answers that they know to be wrong than to produce your own response and support it with evidence that you've read. With Florida standards assessment, we're asking students not to demonstrate their understanding of two or more texts, knowing that some of those texts can be presented in audio or visual format, so they're having to pull in the listening and those viewing skills. And, you know, fortunately, we're in a great place here because of the technology infrastructure that, you know, Dr. Dennis and his team has put in place. Our students are much better off with their access to those multimedia components, you You know, but asking them to synthesize that information from multiple sources and then also respond in various question formats. So it's not just multiple choice, there's multi-select. So, you know, for example, select all of the following details that support this point. And so they may have six possible choices, and they may have to select three or four out of those six that are correct answers. So that's a little higher level of thinking than just looking at four choices and selecting one. There's evidence-based selected responses. So, you know, given, given this point, select the actual excerpt from the passage that supports that. You know, or even on a computer-based grade levels, actually clicking into the passage itself and identifying or highlighting where that evidence supports that. You know, short answer response, where they're actually typing. You know, grade levels four through 10 are computer-based for ELA reading component. So third grade's the only grade level that's not. And even with third grade, there are some short answer responses that they are responding, you know, in their written, you know, paper pencil format. So those are all kind of factors, and those really kind of affect the instructional implications from the new standards that we're trying to support students and teachers with. An actual example from 2014, this was one of the writing prompts that was administered in 2014, to give you an idea of grade four, and asks the student, what do you like most about school? Think about what you like about school, now write to explain what you like about school. So they can base that response on their personal experience, no reading required. Next year, 2015, grade four, this happens to be an opinion task that was administered and actually field-tested on students. They're given three sources. One happens to be an article on a school that is cleaning up graffiti by having a weekend club that paints murals over that. One happens to be an article on a group, again, at the school that is making a garden on the school property. Then one happens to be a contrary point of view where students should not have to help with volunteer activities at school because it gets in the way of their homework. It gets in the way of their extracurricular activities like sports. So after reading those three sources, which could be up to 1,300 words for a fourth grader combined, they then have to respond to this prompt that teachers in your school are planning activities for students. Write an essay in which you give your opinion on whether they should, students should be involved to help improve the schools. So not only do they have to read those three sources, they have to discern between, well, do I support the idea that students are volunteering and that they're, you know, joining the garden club and they're joining the art club, helping beautify the campus? Or do I agree with Author Three, who has said, you know what, kids shouldn't have to participate in that. You know, there's enough that they have to do for homework, that they have chores at home, that that really affects, you know, their performance in school if they're doing all these extra things. So they have to discern which opinion they want to support and then use that evidence to then respond in writing to support that task. So those are very different tasks that we're asking students to now perform at the elementary level. Grade five, a sample FSA prompt, again, from 2015, was an informative prompt. Fifth graders had to read four sources. So those four sources all tied to the overall topic of light pollution. After reading those four sources, they had to write an informative essay to present to their class about the problem of light pollution in the United States today. So that's really a real-world kind of connection. You think fifth grade, science is heavily focused on. Fifth grade, you see that direct integration of science content into language arts. And so those four sources, for example, the one just explained what light pollution was. The second source went into the implications of light pollution. It even provided a diagram. So when we talk about bringing in media, fifth graders actually had a diagram showing how if lighting on buildings is pointing down, that's actually helping, you know, decrease light pollution. But if we've got outside lighting going up towards the sky, that's causing more light pollution. So they had that. And then the fourth source actually touched on how light pollution's affecting sea turtles at Florida's shorelines. So we're looking at, you know, multiple sources, again, where they're having to discern, evaluate, choose which evidence from all of those four that they want to, to put forth their point. You know, this example would be another example of fourth grade content, much like with Keith shared. With his secondary example, this idea of the civil rights movement is present across all grade levels in the social studies standard. So to give you a visual of what this might look like at the elementary level, again, even at fourth grade, we're asking them to look at more than two sources. So a photograph, informational text, and then we've got an example of a primary source there. It's actually a handwritten letter from a student at the time when schools were integrated. So providing that primary account of what the implication of desegregation was. So for example, with this task with FCAT, a question would have then, you know, according to the article, so just one article, how are African Americans treated differently before and after the civil rights movement? Again, kind of selecting from multiple choice and really attending to only one source. Now, whether it's responding in writing on the writing component, or if it's the ELA reading component, students could see three sources, and they are asked to generate their own thought and kind of synthesize, what's the connection between those three sources and how do they differ? Example prompt here that could be used with those sources. Using information from those sources, explain African-American fight for equality in Florida. So in order to do that, there would have to be some, you know, attention to those higher-order questions that, you know, Keith modeled. But the student would have to be able to, you know, ultimately look at independently and synthesize and analyze, well, what do I see? Well, I notice all of the students in the classroom are African-American. I see windows are open, hmm, that suggests maybe, you know, school was different then and now. I see that also the teachers are African-American. So hmm, I know that this probably portrays school before integration occurred, you know? And also knowing, okay, we know this is an actual evidence from Columbia County School in Florida. Then taking that information and thinking, well, how, how has school changed from that picture in Columbia County to now this letter that's handwritten by a student, 1972 actually, from the Miami-Dade area? You know, I'm looking at, okay, so what's different from those two sources? And then pulling it together with an informational text that, you know, provides some background information. Now, what's interesting about Source Three is this happens to cover all of civil rights in Florida pertaining to not just African-American groups, but also Hispanic groups, women's groups. And so the fourth grade student would have to be able to evaluate this information and realize some of this is not pertinent to my task, to the question that I'm asking, or that I'm being asked to respond. So that is definitely representative of the level of text complexity that a fourth grader would see, as well as the content, as well as the word count when you look at that passage, of what they would be expected to see at their grade level. So, you know, we wanted to look out that whether secondary or elementary, those expectations are very much connected with having to pull information from multiple sources, having to integrate science and social studies content in language arts. That we can't think in compartments anymore. I write for 60 minutes, and then I go to reading, and then I, you know, am only reading for 90 minutes. It's very connected, and that reading and writing is embedded within all disciplines.
Yes, you want to add, I never remind you ever now, but when we have a prompt, some of those are topics we should write about, do you have differing opinions that you can choose from?
Absolutely.
Like global warming, someone would say, yes, it's a bad, others would say, no, it's not. So do you have that?
Absolutely, yes, that is present across grade levels. And in fact, students are required to be able to identify which opinion they think is better supported with evidence, or if it's a writing task, they may be asked to side with one of those viewpoints and then use evidence from the appropriate source to justify that. In the secondary level, not only do they have to look at, I mean, they have to look at the counterclaim, the argument, and kind of analyze both arguments and utilize evidence to say who had the stronger argument. So that is prevalent throughout. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Is that, are you finished?
Do you all have any other questions? Oh, I thank you for your time.
It's been a great, it's like going to a movie, it works. Thanks very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so basically, that concludes our state district, Part One. Really wanted to give you that sense of the ELA, what we're doing in ELA to help support instruction, and then also the, and how that connects to our data and the social studies information as well, and the blending of the instructional practices that are taking place in our district.
Really interesting.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Let everyone get a chance to, actually, get some lunch.
Is there any more? Is this, is this the end?
No, there's more.
There's more?
There's more. Yeah, after, next, I'm going to talk about alternative.
Oh.